Recording is now live.
I think to call this meeting of the Finance Committee to order. It looks like we are live and there's our agenda. Members present are Pat Higgins, Carl Jacobs, and myself, Kelly Lesson at Lessons, and members of the administration. So we will notify the committee when other members join us. So we have three items on the agenda today, and I'm going to begin with the budget review.
Okay, so really just wanted to walk through the budget book. The information that's in there, where to find it, kind of what it means. And so really just kind of go through the different sections of the budget book. So everyone's got a kind of firm understanding of where to find the information when they want to go. Do some of their own research. First table of contents and everything, and I can blow some of this up once we get to the good parts. We'll board the chart or orb chart in there, and then a district profile, really just kind of high level overview of our district, how many students we have. Really how we're organized, and this is similar information we provide in our financial statements. All of us just copy and paste from there because we do it in both sections. A calendar, and then a kind of a long term financial planning, which is lessons you referenced yesterday of just kind of talking about our future deficits if everything stays the same.
Could I ask you to pause and maybe for the record, just kind of go over what our forecasts are for upcoming fiscal years if we have no change to that base through an allocation?
Sure, and really have a kind of rough map. Rough math that out is the amount of one time funds that we're using to build this budget plus inflationary costs to it. So we have $45 million in fund balance and about $20 million in Easter money that will go away after we spend it. So $65 million rough estimate, or how much money do we use on one time money? Plus 2% to 3% inflation is 13 to 20 million. And that gets to about 78 to 85, or 78 to 85 million deficit. And that's including, you know, that debt also includes the change we've made this year, which is an increase to PTR and then other administration and ops maintenance changes. So typically, that's how we, and that's how we could cost it out our budget deficits over the years is what we're spending now, how much of that's one time and plus inflation?
And I'm reading, you know, yet last night, we had a brief question about what would a $68 million shortfall look like if we just solve that with FTE? But I'm looking at the last line in this paragraph, which says budget shortfalls over the next three years could result in the elimination of over 1,200 positions in order to close the fiscal gap.
Right, and that's, you know, the 78 to 85 million plus 13 to 20 million each year on top of that.
1,200 cumulative positions?
If it was flat funding.
If it was flat funding.
And it really depends on the type of position. You know, it's more of an even distribution based on average salary across the district versus any specific type of position, like TA or paraprofessional positions, custodians cost far less than teachers or administrators.
Pause it, any questions thus far?
Okay, so the next section, we do include the budget pamphlet that we hand out to folks. It's a like 16 page document that just really high level information on our district. Messages from the board superintendent, some facts about the districts, our board closing guardrails. And then it talks a little bit about how our money is generated through the state foundation formula. I'd kind of like to pause for a little bit and talk about how we, how to estimate what would be the effects of BSA increases. How you can kind of calculate that just rough math. So we talk about a thousand dollar BSA increase that's in the legislature now. It's really the way that that works as far as basic need is this adjusted ADM times the BSA is our basic need. So when that BSA increases, so if it were to increase a thousand dollars, it would be a thousand times about 73,000 adjusted ADM, and that's about how much new state money we would get. If it's a BSA increase. There is a local contribution on there that's allowable, and that's going to be 23% of that 73 million that it will generate. I mean, it came out to about 17 million or so. That's going to be also limited by how much we can possibly collect on the local tax cap. Because we're beholden to either the city or the state caps. And also they've already done their, or by the time any action will have been taken on this, they'll be pretty well done with the city's budget and the tax appropriation already made. So we're kind of limited on timing in that regard. But yeah, just as kind of a rough estimate, 73,000 times whatever that BSA increase would be pretty close to the additional dollars that ASD would get.
Number Jacobs?
So I was hoping that at some point, once we discuss kind of the primary candidate for what may pass, right? We have one potential piece of legislation to address the BSA so far, that we could begin on some kind of future planning. And what our future would look like if the legislation passed. So if the $1,000 BSA passed with no future inflation proofing, where would that leave us? And if I missed this in the budget book, forgive me. Where would that leave us for FY '25 and potentially beyond?
Kind of depends on how we spend the money. Like if we were to take some of it and put it into savings, replenish our savings. It just, it really depends on what kind of ongoing cost to restore. Like if you were to decrease the PTR by the one, or even more to get class sizes smaller, you know, that really limits what you can do in future years with that money. So it's, and then part of the other thing would be, you know, we also have some unsettled contracts out there, what those end up being with that money too. But really, I mean, we could start mapping out a plan based on different scenarios. And it also kind of depends on the color of the money too. If it's one time money, you have a lot less flexibility in that plan than you do if it's an increase in the BSA that's going to be permanent. Ideally, the increase will become with some sort of inflationary grouping component to it, not what we've been advocating for. So we can do some long range planning for both financial reasons and for educational reasons to get those instructional models in place and something we can count on.
Man, sure, can I follow up?
Please.
Thank you. So, and I think that's, that's great, and I appreciate your comments last night, Mr. Elif, about one time funds, and it might have been Mr. Anderson as well, speaking to one time funds really provide just more fiscal uncertainty going forward than until we get a statutory increase. And hopefully with inflation proofing, this will be an annual conversation. I think it might be helpful as we engage legislators. Obviously, we flew to Juno, but I know my conversations are just starting. And so, and that doesn't have to be in person. So as we continue to have those dialogues and informed testimony, for instance, it's happening today. It might be helpful to have that vision of what it looks like with just a thousand dollar BSA increase. A thousand dollar BSA increase that's just one time funding that is the statutory fix. And then potentially a thousand dollars plus inflation proofing and having those three tracks. So lawmakers clearly understand the different visions that we don't have to say necessarily.
Yeah, we could try to put together some high level visions of what we might expect to see under those different circumstances.
I know, you have ample free time to do it, I'm sorry.
You know, the difficult challenge is Totem, ACE, and AEA, those are where your big money is for contract increases. Plus APA at 140 people. I mean, they really, it doesn't impact the district's budget a whole lot. But trying to guess as to what the board might be thinking for AEA, Totem, and ACE, or, or you know, there have to be some assumption
Sure.
on what those contracts may be. And once you start publicly talking about the assumption, then, then everyone knows what your assumptions were. So, so if Andy goes more conservative on his assumption that it would be a 2-2-2 or whatever, at least within the board, they should understand what that means, like if it's going to be higher than that.
Right. And I think
Those are really difficult, those are uncomfortable discussions publicly, right?
Sure.
Because
Can I, if I might, Mr. Anderson, it's a good point, the flip side of that is, I think this board's been pretty transparent that, and Superintendent Bryan has too, that we have chosen to put a glass ceiling on pay with some of our bargaining units because we're trying to focus as many resources as we can in the classroom. And so at some point, we have to fix that if we're going to address our recruitment and retention issue with support staff. And so I think it's okay to own that because those choices haven't always been ours.
You know, seven of eight bargaining groups had a 0-0-0
Right.
year, and it was just AEA that did it. Just, I mean, since it's, I don't know how many people log into this soon, but that's just something to keep in the back of your mind.
Sure.
That the more conservative you are in your assumption, or the more liberal you are in your assumption, it, it sets the stage
Yeah.
for negotiations.
I think Dr. Bryan said it best when he talked about bus drivers and that we have to have folks taking kids to school. We need our cafeterias fully staffed. So we should be having those conversations, and I'm not afraid to have those conversations either.
Well, those people were intentionally kept really low in order to maximize them in a classroom.
Right.
Yes, maximize the number.
They were the bill payers, right? For several years, or six plus years.
And that's kind of how we're coming home to roost, where we don't, you know, even, we can't hire the people that way. So it's, especially like the paraprofessionals and Totems that I think that'll be the biggest exposure we have on a lot of this, because those are the ones that seem to be having most turnover and some of the harder to fill now that aren't really being addressed quite yet.
And if I might, but what I would say in closing is, I think that it's important to acknowledge that because legislators need to hear that we funnel so many resources into the classroom. We're having difficulty hiring support staff, which in turn supports educators. And so by having those conversations one on one, I think it's good to talk to the board too.
I know Andy and I are telling that to the legislators.
Absolutely. We need the public too as well, because our support staff are, they're important, we need them, yeah. Sorry, did you real men, Mr.?
Very well, a perfect conversation, thank you.
All right, so going through, this is still the budget pamphlet, just really high level data about where we do. The funding chart that we showed you guys last night is in here, just as a way, this, we usually use this document to walk through people. You know, here's kind of what we're doing as a district at a high level. It has just general information about where we spend our money, how we get our, how we get our money.
Could we pause and go back just a page more, please? One more back.
Member Higgins has a question.
I just had a question in regards to increases and a statement made last night that if we get the thousand dollars plus, that there'll be a delay in increasing the local government share because of the tax cap as to how quickly they can raise to pay the maximum amount that's there. Now, as I understand, the municipality has, one, been increasing, has been benefiting from adjusting to the, to the tax cap using the funds that we are not getting right now, but they've been increasing more. And that doesn't limit what they give us, this is what they keep. It just gives a combined tax cap in regards to how much is there. Now, I know that can be an issue as to where the funds would go, which is that a pretty accurate statement?
Yeah, under city charter, there is one, only one tax cap. So it's not delineated between the district and the municipality. So, you know, whatever we don't take within our tax cap, the city can go up to the total cap, I guess. We have been able to, even outside of just our general fund tax appropriation, the city's been supportive in shoring up our transportation fund. So we have, you know, five plus million dollars of tax funds coming in to support transportation as well. So really how that works out, we've asked, you know, for the maximum we can in our general fund over the past several years. And then whatever we need to shore up transportation, in which the city's been, we've been fortunate to get that money from them. But, you know, you are correct, you know, if the amount the city can contribute goes up substantially, you know, then we just need to weigh the appetite for, if the city's at, or close to the overall tax cap, you know, what's that, what's that mean for us? We can collect more, or are there willingness to make cuts in the city to give us more? But overall, you know, they can't, they can only collect up to that one cap.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, you know, I think the mayor's proposed budget had was about four and a half million or so underneath the tax cap. And then the assembly added some things, I don't know where they left off, but I think they're a little bit under the tax cap anyway.
Okay.
But now certainly not 17 million.
So I just wanted to take a closer look at this chart to show how it worked out. Because I think it shows how balancing our budget, and I just wanted to clarify my understanding that the big blue bar on the top of FY '23 is the one time, the $16 million from the state that we've saved
Yep.
from this year, that's moving into
That becomes
that yellow fund balance box, which is now inclusive of that $16 million, $45 million. So it's a healthy fund balance. And that 273 per student is really a reflection of $20 million of ESR funds.
That's correct.
So we, we are leaning on $65 million in savings, essentially.
Yes.
To balance this budget. So there won't be anything left.
Right. Yeah, unless needing new money, money comes in, I'll think, you know, if we get all the money and extend all the money as we planned, then yeah, we would be down to the board minimum in fund balance and not have any Easter money left.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the rest of this is really just kind of the high level expenditure, where we spend our money. Kind of broken out into different, and how we get our money into different percentages and charts. But by and large, like I said earlier, that money goes into direct instruction, special education instruction, and then ops maintenance are the three highest, or most costly items we have. You will see on our general fund revenue here, it is going up quite a bit, but from 23 to 24. And that's our general fund, and that's the use of that one time, the 45 million in fund balance. That's why that increase on the per student amount is going up. But just to kind of have that in your mind, why that increases there is because of savings and not new money from the state.
And I'm jumping ahead of you here, but in looking through sort of the rest of the budget book, a lot of, you know, if you flip to an individual school, it looks like spending is increasing.
Yes.
And that's, it's not because overall spending is increasing. It's because we've moved our, our fund balance and our ESR savings into this budget, into the general fund. And now we're making those expenditures for each school out of those.
That's exactly right, those individuals paid
Mobilized funds.
just the general fund and the increased cost by using those fund balance reserves to move those teachers back from the Easter money into the general. And then we'll show that the appendix G that shows the comparative amount of teachers. So you can go see a more mind's eye of the actual change at individual school. Then we go through the same things that we did through last night, where here's the the Easter fund and things we added in, PTR, and then our school based changes, like we did last night. And then how we went through the other middle, high, and alternative programs.
So can we, on page nine, what I see is about $3 million in
The pages are numbered differently on this.
I'm looking at the chart, it says FY '24 fund, general fund, school based changes. So I'm thinking how, okay, so we have a $68 million structural deficit. We got $45 million in fund balance, $20 million in ESR funds. Is this $3 million then one of the ways that we're
No, one, yeah, one of the ways
that helps to balance the rest of the budget? These are the cuts that we're making?
Right, most of the cuts were related to the PTR change and the school closures. So you can see those two biggest ones there, 62 FTE for the PTR, and then the almost 14 FTE that we were able to reduce with school closures.
If you look at the charter school one, the 3 million, that's, that's because family grew so much, and that's really going to student allotments.
Right, and they grew that much this year, so we had to fund them about that much this year too. So that, let's see, then going into the financial section of this. This is one thing, you know, as I thought about it last night, we left out of the presentation, we probably should have had this in. This is the overall tax or spending limit request. It'll be about 905 million, there's a fairly substantial increase. There's a lot of fund shifting going on between the general fund and the grants, and that's because shifting that money from ARC into the general fund. And then there's this $55 million in capital projects. And what that is, is the reserve that we put in when we did that, I think it was, was it Portnoy was 24? Then when we're allocating the bond debt reimbursement, we had about 55 million identified projects on that list. So we wanted to put that spending authority, so when we go and spend that money, our upper limit spending authority is intact. But that's why you see that big increase there. It really is just that one time money that we got from school bond debt being put into capital and having those projects identified. It doesn't include the other 37, 38 million that we put in there just to say we're holding it in capital projects until the board identifies a use for it. But so you do see that increase there, and it may not all be spendable. If it does, we have the upper limit authority for it. The other thing to note on here, if you're not too familiar with it, is this 25 million in project carryover. This is just a budgeting thing, it's not new money, it's just how much money that we carry forward from, or anticipate carrying forward from FY '23 to FY '24 as far as ongoing projects. Most of that money's tied up within charter schools because they can keep their money and roll it forward. But we do have ongoing maintenance projects, IT projects, curriculum purchase things that we just encumber and carry forward. Haven't spent yet from the current year. So really, that's, that's what that 25 million is, just to acknowledge that we do carry money forward. So really just to kind of help that with the transparency piece of it. And to keep it, and really, it was an efficiency measure too, being able to have like one budget year versus having to track old money separately than new money. So it made things a lot easier for finance and IT, and made it a little more transparent for the public. But the rest of the financial section is really dedicated to showing how much or how revenue is generated in each fund. So to walk through the funding sources of our general fund, state revenue, local revenue, all the foundation formula. If you ever need someone to help, someone to understand what that foundation formula is and how it works, this section of the budget book is really a good way that people can walk through themselves and see how much money is generated. And we have this, the school size factoring notes, kind of map it out just to show what it looks like as you increase the school size and how much money you get on the adjusted ADM for those school sizes. And that's where the less money per kid for bigger schools comes in.
I have a question that's not related to your present, it is related to your presentation. In a recent ESR presentation to the House Education, maybe the Senate Education, Senate Education Committee, we saw a chart showing the costs that were adjusted for the state of Alaska. And one of the reasons that costs for schools are high in Alaska is because of small schools. For, how many of ASD schools would like fit under the state of Alaska's definition of small schools? Not very, I mean, any, some?
Some of them probably would.
Couple of the charters perhaps? So, so our small schools are not necessarily one of those cost drivers for the state? It's kind of what I'm wondering.
No, and we're set up the way that the size of our district and the way to have it in a foundation formula. If an alternative school drops below 175 students, they, their ADM gets counted at the highest school. So they'll be counted in east or west, or whatever school's got the most ADM that year. So we don't really get the benefit from that small school adjustment like Pelican Mine or something. But yeah, part of that cost is, you know, if you go to a school district or a school with, you know, 50 kids in it, and they have a principal, superintendent, school board, those costs per student are considerably higher than what we can do with the economies of scale. And so as you look at this
You can look at, it's like, it's really around 100 kids where it really starts skyrocketing above
Yeah, you can really see that curve.
what we have, right? And as you get closer to 10 kids, like Elutions got 12 kids in one of their schools, they're getting a two plus multiplier, where even our smallest elementaries are like in the 1.2 range. So it really is, but there's a lot of small schools, like 50 or less.
Yeah, there's a whole lot, so it's
Real quick, member Domi has joined for the record.
And really, you know, as we looked at our, you know, we went through the exercise of school closures, and you know, by the end of the five years and the whole harmless, the revenue drop and the expenditure drop whenever we combine those schools was pretty close to equal. So I think it's kind of an indicator that this model, or the, you know, this model of the school size adjustment does work fairly well for economies of scale. I shared our template with Juno, and they went through the same exercise and came out pretty similar result too. So it seems to work fairly well in that regard. But if they can keep up with the district cost factor and the inflation, you know, that would be a little more ideal. But this piece of it seems to be okay for what, for its intent. But it walks through, you know, our, how you turn the student count into dollars essentially with all the different steps. So if someone wanted to take a particular school and just walk it through how much money generate by just that school, they could do so just reading through the budget. So really just walks through all those steps, walks through the required local contribution, how that gets calculated with the property values, and then the additional local contribution of how that's calculated as well, being 23% of the total basic need number. So the rest, the rest of this really is just showing the revenue for our general fund. We talked a little bit about expenditures in here, but that's really not where the meat of our expenditures are. A little bit on personnel, and this one's kind of, we've kept this in the budget, this page, and it's really an indication of the state used to have a, what they called a 70-30 rule, where 70% of expenditures would be spent on instruction and 30% could be spent on non-instruction. And how they defined that was instructional activities and functions 100 through 400 were instructional, and then 450 through 780 were support. So we've kept that percentage just to kind of show how it's been over time down here. The state no longer requires that. What happened was like there were so many small districts getting waivers because so much of their budget was eaten out by operations and maintenance costs like heating fuel, you know, and having superintendent in the school board for a smaller number of students that everyone was, a lot of districts were requesting waivers, so they ended up just doing away with it because it just wasn't applicable to so many, so many districts. But we have kept that in there just as a, as a measure of accountability for our budget. I should mention in appendix A of the budget book too, there is a definition for all these, all these functions. So you can see what, what is included in instruction, what's included in support services students. So there's different areas that would be included, so because it's not really readily and it's not, I guess, readily understandable if you just look at school administration, what, what that includes. So there is definitions in the back of the book for that.
Could you just briefly touch on, so I think my sense is that, you know, when you look at an instruction going up by 20%, that's not necessarily we're spending more on instruction, it's that movement of funds
Exactly.
towards instruction. Just the same old true for some of the, the increase in student support services instruction, that's a movement of
Yes.
funds.
Yeah, that's
Not actual increased outputs.
Right.
Or outlets.
A very small, I wouldn't say small increase, but it's, that's probably going to be the mental health department getting stood up. That's where it goes, that's where it fits in. And then I think the other big one was the reading specialist, we had like 11 FTE in there, and then whatever other kind of interventions they were doing on through teaching and learning for those, the reading interventionist things. So that's, they all fit into that one category. The district admin and support services, you see that same, or similar increase there. And that's going to be the IT folks coming in, and a lot of the software and devices that we're bringing in. So probably they were previously paid out of Easter money. But yeah, you're exactly right, a lot of this is a shift from what was in Easter now into the general fund. And the instruction will be a combination before, between the teachers we pull in and then decremented by the PTR increase. We do the same thing with our other funds, people transportation.
So could you, so earlier we were saying that people transportation, we're getting, the city is shoring up our transportation fund with about $5 million. Is, how can I understand the scope of underfunding in transportation?
Good question.
By flat funding?
So of the, you know, almost $28 million that we anticipate spending in our transportation funds, about 20 million will be picked up by the state. So percentage, trying to do the math in my head. I think it's about, probably close to what, 30?
It's almost 40.
Almost 40%. The local government is picking up versus the state government. Where 2016, it was self sufficient, where the state picked up 100% of the cost. But since then, we've been having to increasingly add more and more But since then, we've been having to increasingly add more and more.
That's thirty, but we've also reduced costs, so.
I think the forty percent.
I think we came up with forty, thirty eight to forty.
I think that was just what the state and this, the per student money for the state would need to increase to short out, not necessarily a percentage of the total.
It was somewhere, it was somewhere between thirty eight and forty. Yes, don't remember.
So that, so if we increased four hundred and eighty one dollars per student by thirty eight, forty percent.
Five one percent thirty eight.
That would be about what we need.
That would give us what we needed. Okay.
So that's the revenue, that's, and that's, we discussed a little bit about the revenue generation for there and then the schedules are in the, the rest of the book. The grants, same thing. We just have a slide overview of where we get the money, how much in total. Debt service, we are going to lower, we'll lower in the tax request for that just based on the amount of bonds we anticipate having to be able to pay off or having due next year. And that's going to reduce by about ten percent. We did have, I think, a one high payment that's, or bond payment that's falling off for next year that we paid out, maybe the refunding bond, but. So that's really where it comes from. But this is fully funding the debt service so long as the state continues to provide the bond debt reimbursement. Capital projects, just to blurb about the fifty five million dollar increase to account for the spending on authorized projects from that bond debt reimbursement. And then some more thing for write-up for nutrition. And then student activities, we remain the same. Student activities is they can't spend more than they generate. So we just preserve some level of upper limit spending. And it's been fluctuating a lot since COVID. It's starting to rebound. So we don't know if we'll spend that whole seven point nine million or if they'll generate that whole seven point nine million, but they can only spend what they generate. So it's not really any risk to the district on what we budget in the year other than having the upper limit authority.
Any board member questions online or in the room?
Okay. So then then. So starting on page fifty one of the book, then we start getting into how the money is spent. The first couple of pages are the total by organization. So that's going to be at the department level and the school, in the school level. So you can see each, every one of the departments that we have and then it starts to get to the schools. The departments are one, that one hundred thousand through ten ninety nine. Being looked through there shows the three years of actuals and two years of budgets. And then the difference between the adopted and the preliminary, the adopted for twenty three and the preliminary for twenty four. But that's each by department. You'll see the two new departments stood up this year is mental health and preschool. So those are the new ones. So we do that for all the departments and schools. And we'll have this for other funds too, but, and then we have by district object, and this is going to be the type of expenditure. So you can see how much we spend on elementary teachers or any other, really just, just by type. So you can see like elementary teachers going up by twenty two million. And again, that is just the cost of what we're bringing in from the Eser. So we have that and so really it goes through the different types of benefits, different types of service, contracted services, utilities, supplies, equipment. That's all in there. We have a general fund total, so that'll match the five hundred and ninety eight million dollar budget. And that's on page fifty eight. And then we have the FTE. So when we start looking at all the different schools and departments, they all have the same, the same kind of standard presentation where we have the cost by state object for that department and the FTE by state object in that, in those departments. This is for the district as a whole, but then we do break it down even further by department or school.
Can I ask a, a question? So, you know, we talk about salary and benefits. Does the number here encompass?
Yeah. So it is in here. It's just, and it's just broken out on this section versus by each individual department or school. And we do have it broken down even further and all these objects are defined in that appendix A as well. These are the state objects that you can, they're a little more easier to understand and what might fall into the state functions versus the objects, but they are defined in the back as well. I would note the big change that we're, you're going to see and hear from previous years. And we touched on this a little bit in when we did the, the financial statements is the interest, you'll see this interest on long-term debt, redemption of principal long-term debt. That was due to a new Gatsby pronouncement that requires us to capitalize cost of leases. So, you know, Procheul pays X amount in rent and scheduled to pay that amount for the next ten years. We have to capitalize that and go back and book it as a principal and interest versus a lease cost. It's an accounting measure that they think is going to make things more clear. However, I somewhat disagree. But you, you will see that change. So you'll see like a rent expense going down and then this increasing essentially. So it's no real net change in our general funding source, but like on our government-wide financial statements, you do see that change. But that's probably a little more tactical than we want to get into for purposes of this. When we do report it by state function and object, that's the state standard and broken out like this is we do include in our budget book so the state can see how we're aggregating that into their, to their standards. And that was the one we are fixing this percentage here because it's pulling the difference divided by the twenty four is the twenty three. I think you caught that as you're doing your, your reviews. So. So that'll be corrected on the next version. We just kind of wanted to make note of that. Then the rest of it, you know, we get into just by department and school and that's the next, probably the next three hundred and eighty pages or so is, you know, all the different schools that you can pull in. Here's a random, here's Curdwood. It shows the total budgets and then the FTE. So it really, it's just, you know, the standard across all departments and schools. Going down, we have the same thing for, whoops. There's a lot of them. Then we have the same thing for transportation where we show the total, total dollars, total FTE. We do it, then we have by, kind of by department within transportation, those same schedules. We show dollars and FTE. Crossing guards, if you look at that, those are temporary employees. So we don't show that a full-time thing there, but you do see dollars and salaries. So, but it is for temp employees. Not a lot of money in there, but yeah, just really the different areas of people transportation are in here. Same with student nutrition. We have the fund total. Staffing and then the charts are a little bit misleading because they, they scale. So it's between two hundred and eleven and two hundred and twenty. It looks like a bigger jump than the, the two FTE might indicate. So just got to keep that in mind as you, if you're just looking at the graph part of it, they do scale. Otherwise, it wouldn't all fit correctly on the automated charts. Let's see. And then we have, the grants are reported a little bit different because they don't have this. We have capital projects is the other one we have in here. And this is just their overall administration costs. So the cost of director and the project managers are in here. Those end up getting billed out essentially to the bonded projects or the different projects that we have. So it encompasses a cost of the project versus within this department. But we want to show how much that department actually costs because it doesn't ever really show up anywhere else. The FTE in there and then the grants, we break out by grant type. And we just typically just have the one year of grants in there. There's twenty million dollars for our, so. We do have a fairly large contingency in here because we don't know exactly what grants we're going to get or what will be awarded. So this is really just to preserve that spending authority. If we get new grants that we're not expecting or that didn't get reported back to us as far as doing a budget request.
But we didn't, the budget's not hinging fifteen million dollar contingent.
And we'll spend what you get. Okay.
Yeah, same things. But unfortunately, what happens is if we get a million dollar grant, we take a million dollars from that fifteen million as far as a budget and then put it into whatever grant we receive. So it's not money we can spend unless we have a grant award. Then we do the FTE that's been reported by or been requested through the grants. But that's really the, the functional parts on the expenditures. Here's the appendix A that I mentioned that shows the, the state chart of accounts. We don't use the optional codes. We just use the required ones.
Can we go, I'm sorry, go back to page four thirty nine in the book, which was looking at the grants. And I had flagged this earlier. It's a small item, but it, it looks like it shows a title name for Abbott Loop. So if we're closing Abbott Loop.
Oh, that money will just be redistributed.
It would be redistributed to the receiving schools then?
Yeah.
In proportion to the.
I think they probably just kept that in there based on what formula they had to begin with. So yeah.
It wouldn't go to receiving schools if they're not title one schools.
Ah, okay. So they'd be reapportioned to the title.
You know, honestly, I, I know we heard it at all the town halls, how people said, what about that? Is it still going to be a title? Title is worth like between a hundred and ten and a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, they have a hundred and twenty five.
It's really not any bigger than that. It used to be huge until East Department became title schools and they took a huge amount of the title dollars because it's per student at a title school. So it really isn't a huge amount of money. So when Dr. Brian asks the instruction team to look at what are the additional supports needed at Trailside, which is only going to get thirty six kids soon, which gets the bulk of them. Those additional supports, it's easy to more than make up for the small amount of title money.
I'm going to check my poll. Does that figure, you said a hundred and ten, a hundred and forty thousand?
Depends on the school, but that's probably about the average, like Abbott Loop's got a hundred and twenty five.
Okay. Does that count the cost for the meal service?
No, no, that's completely different.
Okay.
So like Trailside, we know how to fix Trailside. It's a small number of kids. We'll make sure they get fed.
Sure.
Because then they're going through now to roll that into the CDP schools and make sure they're covered that way. There's a lot of different mechanisms. Almost every title school happens to be in the CDP program.
Sure.
But it's, it's, there's a lot of schools that are not title schools that are in the CDP program.
Okay, thank you.
Past appendix A, which is just again the definitions by the state functions. You can reference those, what, what goes in each one. Appendix B is like a, within those state functions, here's the type of employee. So and the number of FTE by each state function. Then you just see kind of a history on how many employees there are.
I, it caught my eye on an earlier scan of this that we are down a couple hundred FTE over the past five years district wide. Is that an accurate read?
Yes. However, I would say there is, within this kind of making, all things being equal, there is another hundred and sixty four FTE that should be added to this four hundred.
Because there's still the pay for my Eser.
Yeah.
Eser, okay.
So that's kind of general or the equivalency, you'd need to add that one sixty four to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Appendix C, we've gone through that quite a bit. This is just the, the detailed changes. So if you see, if you can, and this will reference back to each department and school or department page. For the most part, the schools are just too long to put in here, but so we'd aggregate those up. But the department page, when you see a change in the department, it will correspond to, one, the organization number here is how you find it. And then this will correspond to a change in the position. So if you look at just even the chain, the first one, the HR, the equity and compliance position moving, you know, with the HR budget, see a plus one and a minus one into the equity budget and reference back to this just so you know exactly what it is.
Can you go back to appendix B for a second? Can I explain appendix B? Because there were a lot of teachers who got up at board meetings and talked about how the number of teachers dropped over time, but not necessarily an absolute equivalent number of other types of positions. When teachers are based off PTR and you lose five thousand kids, if PTR even stayed the same, you would lose a lot of teachers. But in a payroll office of nine people, you wouldn't automatically decrease three payroll people just because there's less students, because you still got to be able to run payroll. So it's, when people look at these and they pull one number out and try to, to be able to make an assumption on the fact that every other number should have gone down, like maintenance. We still have the same number of buildings, minus one, that we had last year. So you wouldn't see this huge drop in the number of custodians or this drop that's automatically tied to the number of students because you still have to clean the building. So there, there is always the possible chance when people are giving public testimony that they'll pick one number and say, oh, I got you. Because this number went down, every other number should have gone down by the same percentage. But other than teachers and some other school staff, that's metric space, they're not tied to the number of students. They're tied to the number of facilities or they're tied to the operation. But people, people, math is a weird thing, right? You can, you can pull a number and make it tell whatever story you want. But if their assumptions are wrong from the very beginning, that if there was three payroll people and we lost four hundred teachers, then one of those payroll people should be gone. Well, not necessarily. I mean, you still have to run payroll. And, and that assumption, I've seen it now for spreading years, where people will read this appendix or the appendix in the, now the Act for, where they try to compare where any, any drop in teachers automatically means everything else should drop equally, but that simply is not true. And I just wanted to point that out because you pointed out just the teachers, right? Because that's what you hear is, oh, we lost three hundred teachers. Yeah, I mean, we lost five hundred kids. Maybe we should have lost three hundred teachers if we followed PTR, but the only reason we're short fifty eight custodians is we couldn't hire them. Not because they should have decreased along with the teachers. So I just wanted to bring that out as a cautionary, when you look at that number, not to use that as a comparison against the others because it's not like that.
And just as a follow-up, because this is the general fund five-year history, it, FY twenty three.
It's very skewed because of Eser.
Super, there's huge variance and you can't see the hidden allocations.
And so any assumption that people make off of that without knowing anything else would, would be incorrect.
Okay. Oh, I think Pat's hand this up. Member Higgins?
Thank you. I, I just want to be cautious when we talk to the public though, that we don't say that, that admin is off the table for consideration because if we cut one position there, we're going to be adding people in schools and doing that. I, I just want to be, I want to be more positive that and say, look, we'll look for every place where we can get increases. We're going to look for this. We leave it open and not make it so that one area is precluded from consideration because we're going to assume that it's going to impact everybody else. We can't, it's like selling the, if you're going to cut the federal budget one dollar, you're going to have to sell the Washington Monument. So I just want to stay away from any sort of position that's like that. That's my only reservation. I do know that there's impacts of cutting admin staffing. You, you've got the same obligations. You, we have more things that need to be done in the admin where there's training is a good example. Staff development, things of that nature, then that falls in the admin area, I believe. But I just, I just, I appreciate your comment that you can make anything which you want to with numbers. That's true for both sides. We tend to adjust numbers and we make them and we can, we can present it that way. And I just don't want to, I, I just don't want to dismiss something by assuming that the numbers are wrong any more than that. We can't cut a position because if we do, then we increase staffing everywhere, everywhere else. I just don't want to overstate anything. That's all I'm asking.
Oh, I agree with you completely, Pat. The only reason I wanted to bring that up is because most people don't understand how the district is, is even set up. And they will look at a number out of eight numbers. And when they do public testimony and they come up with their assumption that, that, that oftentimes there's, there's more behind looking at one number when you don't understand what it means, like the Eser funded teachers. If you have five hundred. If you have 500 teachers that are ESR-funded, and all of a sudden you see a 500 drop, but you don't write a white paper for every table in a budget book or an act for explaining what each of those things means every single year. That is very difficult for people, um, I mean, we try to be transparent, right? And you try to put everything out there, but each of these tables could have, especially when it shows historical data, could have 20 pages of white papers behind each year, if, I mean, you can never, you can never really fully articulate, and, and it is often, and you know it happens, um, when, when legislators roll up data and they look at these numbers, but they don't know, they don't know that their initial assumption's wrong. So when they come up with, and therefore, this is true now, because your initial assumptions were wrong in your data analysis. And so it's not that people are, are messing up, Pat, I, I certainly wouldn't imply that, it's just that it's difficult when we show multi-year data. And, and even though Andy and Aurora may know each year, oh yeah, that was the year that we put 500 people in ESR, but five years from now, when someone looks at this year, when we had 500 people in ESR, and if Andy found out better job, she found a better job, only because we all followed Jared, because he left. It, you know what I mean, like, that, that historical knowledge, and, and so those, those assumptions can be confusing. So it is important when people testify based off historical data that they probably don't understand, that you give the administration time to do, to do the work behind the scenes afterwards, before we just assume, um, that what they said was, was.
Yeah, and, and from my perspective, I'm not trying to get into the numbers games of positions, we're just talking about cost as opposed to numbers, whether it's cost of insurance, we talked about that, I know you got something, you were doing something, whether it's cost of benefit administration, whether it's cost of contracts we're doing, it's just an opportunity to look and say, what can we save in areas other than strictly in the schools, and what can we report? So if we have some response saying, we understand your concern, we're doing it this, we're doing that, because that's a legitimate issue, those are not false. And, but they, but you got, they're all on numbers, so we dismiss it all, just don't wanna go in that direction.
I don't think we have, I agree with you.
No.
That's the way my counselor tells me to respond to my kid, too. Nice job there, Tim, I like that.
All right, a couple more schedules we have in there is the tax schedules, this is how we compitate the compel rate. Um, I would note that this assessed value hasn't, we couldn't get an updated assessed value from the city yet for 23, so we're using FY20, or the calendar year 22 amount, and the calendar year taxes are based on, it will be the second half of this budget year and the first half of the next budget year to fund calendar year 23. Um, so that's also a little bit confusing, when you get to start talking back to people about, you know, what the tax increase is. Well, we reported in our general fund, like our eight million dollar request in the general fund, isn't necessarily reflected on tax bills, because it's split over two years. Um, but this just, this is more referencing what that split is. Uh, the next page is how we compitate the, uh, property tax limitation, uh, which is really, how much is your quest last year, rolled through a five-year average for population and CPI, and then some adjustment for new construction and property improvements, uh, or the value of those, which we also don't have for 23 yet. So this, these numbers will change a little bit, um, but really just walks through the calculations on the tax cap. And then the arc spending plans, the requirement for, for deed to have this. So we've included that, the $20 million or so of the plan on spending on the classroom teachers. And then the last one, this appendix G, is the change in total teachers, including ESR-funded ones. So that's really the book. Um, open it up to three minutes of questions.
Or four.
I did have one question on, and I already sent a few questions, and, but, um, on page 477 with West South Eagle River, it doesn't look like they're, I mean, I guess all of our schools are experiencing a PTR increase, but if there's not actually a change depicted here, that's just showing that,
Um.
Like why, like why don't we see any changes?
On debt. We're not increasing 6% of expenditures by any means, or general fund, ESR combination. Um, that's, you know, between this 45 million and the 49 million essentially, so.
So it was the one-time funds the legislature gave us last year?
That's, that's the bulk of the, that 6% increase, that's kind of described.
That we have allocated, but we haven't spent yet.
Yeah, it hasn't been spent, that's why, we have it in next year's plan to spend, because we have to project identified. And whether we'll spend all that or not, probably not, just because they're probably multi-year projects for those secure vestibules and things like that, that we might not be able to get them all done, but that just really preserves that spending authority versus, uh, a play of the spin, I guess.
Thank you for clarification.
In the last minute, can we pivot to item three on our agenda, which is legislation Q and A for SB 52? Do we have any further questions regarding that piece of legislation? I know there's testimony today in Senate Education.
I can, I can chime in with a quick update. Representative Ortiz introduced House Bill 65 that increases the BSE by $1,250.
I like it.
At $1,250?
Yeah.
Wow. And did that, was that introduced, has it been ready to a committee yet?
I don't have that information.
Okay, but that's as of today?
Yes.
That is updated information. Thank you. So that is really close to our $1,268 figure.
Yeah.
That's $13 difference. That's pretty good.
Kelly, I'm gonna bail here, I have a one-part meeting, but that, to keep my team on, but I just wanted to let you know and apologize that I can't stay later.
I think that's the best piece of news that we've had recently, and unless there are any further questions, I'll, uh, move to adjourn this meeting on that potential agenda.
Thank you, I'm sure, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so now we need to be directing.